Sam, what's your agenda?
F3. Maybe it's other business?
Not until after we talk trash.
Yeah, what is it? What's the subject matter?
So are you. I read your article in the paper.
Are you referring my article on trash to be in the same gun?
Absolutely. I'll have to respond to it. It's pretty good.
I hope so. That way I can write more.
I chewed his ass. My wife laid into him pretty good, too.
You what?
She laid into him pretty good, too. It's the benefit of being independent. I can catch you both sides.
She's independent?
Yeah. So am I. How are you?
Oh, you're loaded right?
When do you? When are you on GND?
We usually do economic development stuff under general admin.
Is she under other business?
Not necessarily. But it would likely turn out to be F3.
Oh.
The trash can. Without paying for the trash cans.
So.
Plus or minus a couple of percent?
So you're saying we should wait to, uh, the obvious that they work out the numbers? Just teasing.
Yeah, a little table.
I don't think Pamela's here tonight.
Well, at the moment, she's not.
I'm just, I think at the last meeting, she told me she wasn't going to be here. At the last economic development thing. Hi, Jim.
Your outraged public that they were hoping for.
Well, she picked a fine night to take off.
Yeah. There's certainly some people with an opinion, but I don't think.
I got one there cleaned up and the grand babies are up cleaning the pool.
You have a pool?
Very small. All of them plastic ones to fill up.
Let's see, I'm coming over.
Yeah, me and Steve come over and take a dip.
I don't know. You'd have to fight them for it. They're pretty young and fast.
How old are they?
Three and two.
I can take them.
It's his pool, man. It's a pool and a kid, man. Come on. It's like getting a sucker away from him.
Four-year-old kid. One of my employees was getting some boxes moved and he left them in the office with me. And he was telling me about his, he's got a fast bike and a slow bike and then he showed me this, this slow bike. He would make a good union employee. But his dad's a steward, so I tried, you know. And I told his dad that.
Nest bike and a slow bike.
Someone does this.
So how does he have two bikes?
I was just making conversation with him. He probably got an old one and a new one.
Feiki. How come you never returned my, my texts? He calls you Feiki, right? Huh? Yeah. Couple days ago. Yesterday. Caller ID, just say that.
We'll have to, we'll have to check that out. I think you're ignoring me.
Hey, Feiki, how come the rest of us don't have your text message, uh, number? How come the rest of us don't have your text message number?
I don't know. I was not calling you on my cell phone. I didn't know you had one.
I'm just teasing you.
I send you a text and you respond.
Pinky called, said the sound is on, so he wanted you to talk a little louder.
Sound's not on?
Sound is on.
Thank you, Pinky.
Hello, testing one, two, three.
Hold that. Okay. No problem.
I could sing a song. I don't know if you'd like that or not.
What song?
I don't know. Pick one.
I, I thought that Counselor Clay was our designated singer.
Look, be a lady tonight.
Can we, uh?
All right.
Sinatra style.
Go ahead. Here.
See, I need words bouncing across the screen first.
We're already two minutes late.
What, uh? What, uh, agenda item are we adding data card under?
Twelve F, excuse me, ten F3. I just don't have that ahead.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the July 2nd, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. I should probably tell them to get going back there. I thought we were going, sorry. I'll do this again. Welcome, everyone, to the July 2nd, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Call the meeting in order at, uh, 7:02. Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sherman, absent. Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tapp.
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Mr. McNeil.
Mr. Mayor, uh, if the council is willing, we would like to add a presentation regarding an economic development proposal for data card systems. And that would be ten F3. However, we may, uh, want to change some of the ordering tonight. I'll leave that to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any other, anything from, uh, council? Unintended motion. Counsel Whiting.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consent business. Anything to, uh, remove from consent? Counsel Whiting.
I'd like to take off, uh, number four, C5.
Anything else? Counsel Lehman?
Four D5. It was on a tail when I haven't read it yet.
Okay.
There's also revision on four D4 if you wanted to.
That's a change of the, I mean, of an existing job, uh, description.
Correct.
Anything else? Unintended motion. Counsel Lehman?
Move the consent agenda as modified, removing four.
C5.
C5.
And four D5.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
Second.
Same by Counsel Whiting. Any discussion? Mr. McNeil, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, 4B1 adopts resolution number 7321, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Minnesota Department of Commerce for an auto theft prevention grant in amount of $31,525. 4C1 adopts resolution number 7324, restricting parking on Kasaw 17 or 310 feet south of Dominion Avenue to Kasaw 16 and on Kasaw 78 from Barrington Drive to Kasaw 17. 4C4 adopts resolution number 7326, approving plans and specifications in order to advertise for bids for the Valley View Road Improvements Project number 2012-7. 4C3 accepts a quote from Dietrich Painting and Log Home Restoration in the amount of $27,880 for repairs to the youth building in Lyons Park. 4C4 authorizes the execution of a revised road maintenance agreement between the city of Shakopee and Spring Lake Township for the jointly owned section of 160th Street. 4C5 was removed from consent agenda. 4D1 recognizes human resources technician Alyssa Frye's successful one-year probationary period of employment for new hires and grants her full-time regular status. 4D2 recognizes police record technician Jean Link's successful completion of the six-month probationary period required of newly promoted civil service employees and grants her full-time regular status. 4D3 recognizes engineering technician Forion Halverson's successful completion of the one-year probationary period of employment for newly promoted employees and grants him full-time regular status in the engineering division. 4D4, uh, accepts a revised, uh, position description for the, uh, job of deputy city clerk and authorizes a promotion of Lori Henson to the position of deputy city clerk effective July 1st, 2013, as step D, grade five of the 2013 non-union pay plan. And that revision was on the table tonight. 4D5 is removed from consent agenda. 4E1 adopts resolution number 7225, appointing John Jankey to the Shakopee Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Advisory Board. 4F1 approves payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $1,402,594.94. 4F2 adopts resolution number 7320, which changes the dates of the August 6th and November 6th city council meetings to the following evenings respectively. And 4F3 approves a request for an additional taxi cab and authorizes the issuing of an amended taxi cab license to Timothy Dresson Jr. doing businesses TNT Taxi, 1529 West 6th Avenue, conditioned upon meeting all requirements of the city code.
Very well done, sir. Any discussion on those items? Counsel Whiting.
One item, um, on the taxi cab license. At some point, we may want to limit the amount of taxi cabs so those taxi drivers can, um, make some money in this town without saturating the market. Final comment?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We move on to item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anyone out there who is not on the agenda tonight have, uh, anything to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, business removal from consent agenda. 4C5. Counsel Lehman.
Mr. Mayor, that was mine.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, thank you. Just a quick question for Mr. Looney and I apologize for, um, not calling you on this and checking with you earlier. So if it is something you need to get back to me on, I can accept that. But when was this street scheduled to be reconstructed in our master plan?
Counselor Whiting and Mayor, members of the rest of the council, um, actually this was to be, um, included, um, I think last or this year or the year before. But then because of things moving around, um, because of petitions from Bambirin and other areas of the town, we moved things around. So this was actually supposed to have been probably done this year and for sure next year. So that's why they want to make sure they're in the pipeline. We looked at this petition and the one on Market Street. So we're going to be presenting that to the city council pretty soon. We have shifted some streets around to limit the size. But the recon project would probably be bigger than the one that we're doing this year.
So will this affect, so will something else get pushed back because of this?
Uh, we've, we've actually took a couple of streets out that we could push back. But again, this will be, the recon we're looking at for next year will be bigger than this year. That's about the max we can handle.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Clay.
Has this street enjoyed the, uh, relining of the sanitary sewer system?
No, it hasn't.
Counsel Lehman?
Surface and infrastructure is 50-plus years, both.
The street's in, in, uh, bad shape and, uh, the sewer needs to be replaced.
Okay. Any other questions? Counsel Whiting.
I'll make a motion to accept the position, a petition from Apkar Street residents seeking to reconstruct Apkar Street from 6th Avenue to 10th Avenue and direct staff to consider this project for the 2014 CIP.
Do I have a second? Same by Counsel Lehman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 4D5. Counsel Lehman. Sorry about that earlier.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, didn't have a chance to read it. Now since I have two versions, one which was on the table, I don't know which one is which. So it's funny you could give me a highlight of what the changes are since I didn't read it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to do that.
Wilson.
The position, um, this is a vacant position in the finance department. Deputy City Clerk Jeanette Shaner retired at the end of last week. In an earlier motion on the consent agenda, you promoted our current records clerk Lori Henson into that deputy city clerk position. So now what we currently call a records clerk position is vacant. As we often do when positions are vacant, the supervisor and I have reviewed the job description to see if we would like to repost it exactly as it exists or if things have changed since that job description was last written and maybe it needs a little bit of updating or changes. That is the case here. The current position titled records clerk was created, um, in the 2005 budget when we first purchased our Laserfish electronic document scanning system. And the position was almost solely focused on records. Since that time, we've caught up on the scanning and the records to some extent. We've merged the city clerk's office into the finance department and had a variety of other changes. So the goal here is to maintain the full-time position. It would be in the same pay grade as this current position that is being vacated by Ms. Henson, but it would have slightly broader duties, including a lot of records work and scanning, but also doing some clerical support that impacts more of the finance function of that department. So, um, it is a budget-neutral change from what we have now. It's just kind of a standard part of our process of updating things before we refill them.
Okay. So we still have a, still a records person that are going to be doing that function?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion?
Make a motion to, uh, accept the, this position description of office service worker in the finance city clerk department and authorize staff to advertise. Begin the selection process.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Same by Counsel Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, now we're going to go on an agenda-hopping crusade for the evening, starting with item 10F3. So we're going to go down to the new item added for data card. Mr. McNeil.
Mr. Mayor, this is something that, uh, we added earlier today. We apologize for the short notice, but it is kind of exciting news. But we do have some, uh, time constraints. So with your, uh, approval, we'd like to make just a brief presentation on this and at the end, we'll ask you to, uh, set a public hearing date. Samantha, um, Demaggio is with us tonight and will give you some background on it.
Good evening. Tonight, we have invited two gentlemen from Data Card. Data Card is currently located in Minnetonka. I have invited Mr. Jeff Smolinski and Mr. Jim Borst here to talk to you about the Data Card project. I think it's best just to introduce them and let them tell you more. It's a project we're very excited about and I look forward to them telling you about it.
Thank you. And, uh, behalf of Data Card Group, uh, we thank for the invitation, late invitation, but we're very happy to be here. This I would see more as an introduction to a project that we are very much interested in doing. But we're on a very accelerated schedule. So in a short consensus, uh, timeframe, I'm going to try to describe the project that we're looking at. And then if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Uh, Data Card Group is a 40-year-old company that's been in Minnetonka. Our current location, we've been in for 35 years. We currently own our facility, own our building. Uh, but we've been growing at such a rapid pace that we have outlived the space that we're in. We have two choices before us. To retain the building that we're in, update it for, um, improvements for employees, but then split out to a second facility. And we'll have to relocate about 200 employees to a second facility in Minnetonka. The second option is to find a facility that will accommodate all of our employees, including the potential relocation of two other facilities in the Minneapolis area. One on St. Paul and one that we contract a warehouse. And looking through Minnetonka, we've been working with the city of Minnetonka. It's been acknowledged by both them and us that after about, uh, nine to 12 months of searching, there is nothing that can accommodate Data Card's current population and our growth in a single facility. Therefore, we began to extend our search and we came across a property today in Shakopee, address 1187 Park Place. It's currently an ADC facility, actually now Tyco Electronics, TE. They are in the process of actually relocating to another property here in Shakopee. And that building will become available for sale. We currently are working with them on a very short timeframe to see if that building, we, will accommodate us. I have some design prints, um, that I'll be happy to share with you. But at this time, we do believe it will actually be a very good facility for Data Card Group. Uh, we have some challenges. Our budget that we had put together for the relocation, whether we split the building or we relocated, um, through the design review of this particular facility has come in about 50% higher than planned. In order to make this project work for us, Data Card Group itself is willing to accommodate the extra investment in capital to be able to make this building work. But we seek the assistance of the county, the city, um, and some, um, support from the state to help us maintain the operating cost, to make it cost-effective for us to get into this facility. And that regards, when we modeled this particular facility, which was around six to nine months ago, the information we had at that time, based on the tax assessment, um, has since changed. Apparently, there was an abatement in process or in place at the time that we were given the financial numbers to do our model. And subsequently, that abatement has been released. And so in the fiscal year 2013, that property value has gone up. With our purchase and further investment, we expect that the value of the building will additionally go up. Data Card's prepared, with the current facility, to accept the increase that has been arisen as far as fiscal year 13. But we seek to try to hold that tax value for some period of time through both support from abatement from the city and from the county. Now, to understand the increased investment, Data Card Group, for those who may not be aware of, we build capital equipment for the production of credit cards, debit cards, national IDs, passports, um, university credentials in about 150 countries today. We export about 70% of all of our products outside the United States. But our production in our headquarters is based here in Minnetonka and 680 of our 1,300 employees today are in the Minnetonka facility. The rate of growth at which we're going right now, and I've got some numbers that I could share with you. But in the last three years, actually two and a half years, we've hired 224 employees here in Minneapolis area. Some of those have been replacement jobs. Many of those are new incremental jobs. At this point, the reason why a Shakopee facility is a single facility is very much interesting to us. Our product is very complex. The requirement to keep our engineering organizations, our manufacturing organizations, our marketing organizations together in one facility is a huge advantage to us, uh, in, in dealing with our customers. Especially in the way of government credentials, when we look at national ID programs. Each country that we deal with wants a unique security feature. The inability to replicate counterfeit their particular materials. And many countries do not like the same security feature that another country has. Therefore, our equipment that we build, many times is customized on the fly to meet the requirements. To have our engineering and manufacturing in the same building is critical for us to be as successful as we are. At this point, the challenge that we have for the Shakopee facility is that that current facility is what we would consider a traditional facility. Roughly 20 to 25% of that space is office space. I think it's roughly 125,000 to 130,000 of the 370,000 in the building. The remainder is manufacturing warehousing space. Our requirements at our company of the 680 employees, over 500 of those employees are professional employees. Only about 150 are actually direct hourly folks that actually produce our product with a supporting cast of manufacturing of another 100 and some folks. The building of Shakopee, though the square footage meets their requirements, we'd have to make a substantial investment to convert a substantial part of the manufacturing space into new office space. To give you an idea, and I think Samantha can throw this on the board, um, I just, I'm showing you. For those of you not familiar with the building, this may end up being, um, a little too much detail, but I think it'll help, uh, explain our challenge. So today is a point, this is, we're looking at the first floor of this building. This front part here and here are the offices. The remainder of all of this space today is all manufacturing and warehousing. Our aim is to take this whole center part of the building, which this front part here has a very high window. It's a two and a half-story window to the outside and build a three-story manufacturing or engineering development tech center, utilizing the subfloor space that's already in the building and adding an additional 10,000 square foot mezzanine. So that will actually have two, uh, a subfloor, a main floor, and a secondary floor for a tech center. Today, in our company inside of Minneapolis, we house nearly 300 engineers in that facility. We will then bridge from this facility across the main part to the front offices to connect to our marketing organization. And then the operations organization, which is manufacturing, engineering, um, engineering design services and so on, will be housed in the floor. So the office space will actually now accommodate, all of this will actually be converted to professional office space. This we will retain as manufacturing space, high-tech manufacturing assembly. And this will retain as warehousing operations. We will then improve and add a fitness center for our employees. We need to expand the cafe to about three times the size it is today to accommodate our employees. We will have to make a substantial investment in parking. Today, the parking spaces are 672, I believe, or 662. Our requirements will be at least 1,000. Our initial requirements will be about 810. Um, so we have, uh, planned for the first 810. And then we've shared with the city the requirements. The parking space with the support of the city can accommodate just over 1,000 parking spaces today. But this investment and to convert this, we believe, well done, will actually represent a excellent corporate headquarters for us, Shakopee. Uh, we also believe and would like to work with Shakopee. And the fact that we believe Shakopee is a sleeping giant, that you have a very strong, what we refer to as a bedroom community, where you have a lot of professionals living within the community of Shakopee, but actually driving to Minneapolis and driving to St. Paul for the jobs. By, we share those same employees by being in Minnetonka and being what we call in the inner loop. So employees from our organization will leave and join companies, other professional techno, you know, 3M, Cargill, other companies of similar such. By us getting outside the loop and getting into Shakopee, we believe there's an attraction for current residents of Shakopee who can meet the requirements of the jobs that we're growing and actually may choose to actually drive a very short distance to a company that we believe would be well-represented for the, the city of Shakopee. So with that, I, I open it for any questions that you might have for this early introduction to our company.
First, I'm going to ask Sam, could you please give an overview of how we've gotten to where we are today? Just the process that, what has happened and meetings and such that have taken place? Just so everybody's up to speed.
I wish I could say this just started since I got here two months ago. But actually, this has been a project that Renee and Stacy from the First Stop Shop have been working on and we're so grateful for their help. I think they started looking with you back in July of 2012. Data Card had initially looked at the ADC2 building, the building that Emerson recently agreed to purchase. That was where they started. And I don't want to speak for you, Jeff, but I think that building was maybe too large for your group. So they continued their search. Um, that brought them to the initial ADC1 building. So we've been working with them to try to see, they've, I give Data Card a great amount of credit. They've done a lot of due diligence with their current employees to see what would happen if they moved their business to Shakopee. Would their employees come with them? Do they have to start over again? And I think that says a lot about your company, that you actually value your workers. Want to see if they'll come with whatnot. This morning, we did have a meeting with the county where the county got to hear their presentation. And the county has agreed to, um, hold a public hearing for them. I'm sorry, I didn't quite, do you know what date that was going to be, Mark?
It depends on what date.
What happens tonight?
The council will go with tonight.
So my request of you tonight would be that we will hold a special meeting on July 29th. At this meeting, we'll have a public hearing where you can consider abatement and potentially sack credits. At this time, I'm not sure if that's something that the company needs, but that will give us time to figure that out, to post in the newspaper, to have the 10-day notice. And that's what I'm here asking for you, is if you would potentially hold a special meeting on July 29th to consider abatement for Data Card.
The reason for the July 29th meeting, that's a Monday night. County always takes its cue from the city in terms of what, if any, um, abatement or TIF might be considered. They could hold their special meeting the following day on July 30th. Otherwise, we're into August, which as I understand from speaking, uh, with, Data Card is getting past their comfort, uh, level in terms of wanting to commit, uh, to this. We did get some information from Springstead late today. It's a relatively modest amount of abatement which would be sought. And that's due to the fact that it's an existing building. The county assessor has valued the improvements at somewhere between 2.5 and 4.5 million dollars. But assuming that that's abated, uh, over nine years, I think the city's looking at somewhere around $110,000 as a total. Uh, the county's somewhat less than that because they have a little bit less percentage of the property taxes. But that would be something that we would go through, uh, with you before the public hearing. We wanted to find out from you tonight whether you are willing to call for the public or the special meeting and hold a public hearing on that July 29th date.
So let's get that part out of the way first, July 29th. Counsel Whiting?
I'll make a motion to call for a public hearing July 29th for the purpose of discussing potential tax abatement for Data Card.
Same by Counsel Clay. Counsel Lehman?
Are we going to have discussions at all tonight?
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll, this is more introduction tonight. We'll get into the details, um, when we have the public hearing and those kinds of things. But, uh, yeah, this is overview of the project just to get everybody up to speed so it doesn't seem like we're tossing it all out at the very last second. So did you have any questions on the motion?
No, not on the motion, no.
Any discussion on the motion?
Just a couple of questions, long as they're here.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, we'll get, let's get them.
Get back to that later? Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so we have a motion and a second to have a public hearing and a special meeting on July 29th at 7:00 PM. Uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Pass unanimously. We got that part out of the way. We're good for that. Thank you. Counsel Clay, you had questions? Council Clay, you had questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Jeff.
Filinski?
Jeff Smolinski.
Thank you. 18, 20 years ago, Data Card had a facility here in Shakopee producing credit cards and mailing them out.
I believe we had a bureau. I've only gone to the company since.
In fact, it was just a Tiger Woods night iron from the building you're talking about buying now. And at that time, you were actually producing the cards and mailing them out. It sounds like today, if I'm understanding your presentation, that you're no longer involved in that aspect of it, or at least not with this facility, but mostly it would be the production of the equipment that makes the cards.
Well, so a point of clarity, so Data Card, when it was founded 40 years ago, that was their invention. We hold hundreds of patents revolved around the building of the production equipment to produce cards. Some years ago, and it could be the 18 to 20-year range, well, Data Card actually did produce cards. That's not our business, but we did have a bureau that supported, I think it might have been a local DL program here in the state of Minnesota and some other things. Because of our expansive size, it's actually, for us to actually produce cards is actually counterproductive for us because we sell machines to every card producer in the world. So we're actually in direct competition with our customers. So that bureau, which I believe was the last bureau that Data Card had owned, was closed, again, to focus specifically on what they've been doing for 40 years, which is to build large-scale equipment for high volume. Our machines can produce cards between the range of the large systems from anywhere from 1,500 cards per hour to 30,000 cards per hour, including packaging and mailing and so on. And then we build desktop systems that you might find in a corporation for an ID badge at the front of the building and so on. And those desktop systems can produce anywhere from 180 to nearly 500 cards per hour. So our business has always been building capital goods, but they did actually one time own a bureau. I've been with the company five years, so it's before my time, but I wasn't aware of that.
Well, I did like your analogy of Shakopee being a sleeping giant.
We think so. We actually have had, I've had four new engineers that have recently just bought homes in Shakopee, so we know that even some of our folks have moved here. It seems to be a very nice place for folks to live. We'd like it to be a nice place to have a job. I would like to clear up one thing. There has been some press releases, some information. There was a question asked by one of the county, or the county board members on the average salary. So 65.1 was the payroll in the W2s for Minnesota workers last year. We do have 680 workers. If you do the division, it does come out to be about 95,000 average per job. We think a better representation is if I take a look at the last three years of the hires that we've done and how those people have fared. So I apologize, I wrote it on a small napkin. The, my phone was dying, so I copied it quickly while.
We do that all the time.
At your famous diner over here, Turtles, for a nice burger, so. And this is what we call our fiscal year. Our fiscal year actually runs from April 1st through March 31st. So if I go back, this year alone, we've hired 42 new employees. Some of these are replacement jobs for employees we've lost, other ones are net new hires. But in addition to that, in the last four months, we've hired 92 temporary workers and 29 college interns, that we have a strong intern program. Last year, for last year fiscal year, we hired 98 new employees and 106 temporary employees, and the year prior to that was 84 new employees and 20 temporaries. If I just look at only the full-time new hires that we added for the last two years and three months, it's 224 employees and the average salary was 79,125. So when you take a look at that number that they have, that also includes some of our sales incentives and so on, but to give you a better feeling for what people come as a new job, I thought it'd be better to reflect the last two and a half year new hires. So if you look at the math, I just wanted that to be out there for you to understand. But we do believe, we do bring a fairly substantial payroll to Shakopee if we were to come, and we do believe we bring a large population of professional. And even our non-professional folks are strongly vocational degree. Our requirements for our folks, some have electrical degrees, some have electrical technician vocational degrees. Our instruments are complex. Our employees that we need have to be skilled. So we don't offer a lot of really low-skilled positions, but we offer skilled position and professional positions if we were to come to Shakopee.
Council Wything?
You mentioned your growth past few years, adding those new jobs. Do you see a potential to add more new jobs with the move?
I can answer that a couple of ways. So we also acquire companies, and I'll just use one as an example. So two years ago, we acquired a software company in Denver. Our inability to actually house more and more folks here, we've actually doubled the size of our Denver investment in the last two years in Denver. Many of those positions potentially could be Minneapolis jobs. I have no places for these people to sit. The reason why we have a substantial number of temporary positions as well is because I have no permanent places for people to sit. We do have consumed nearly half of our conference rooms and converted them into offices or shared offices today. So we do believe with the additional growth space that two things could happen. One, positions that we might hire into some of our other locations, and we do have 45 other locations around the globe of Data Card, either sales service or technical support sites, including a manufacturing operation in Suzhou, China, and a development center, support center in France. So those jobs could potentially be here in Minneapolis, provided it had space for them. And the second thing is Data Card does a number of acquisitions. And in recent past, we've actually acquired a company in St. Louis and consolidated those jobs back to Minneapolis. We've also consolidated a substantial number of manufacturing jobs from France back to Minneapolis. So again, with additional acquisitions, provided we have the space, the synergies for us, if they make sense to bring them into one facility, can add value. We have an acquisition in St. Paul today that provided it would work out for our employees, we would consider consolidating that into this facility too. Part of the reason being is it's a small group, and I think we believe that they actually would feel better being part of a larger group, but we have to deal with any transportation issues that they have on the other side of the city that we'd want to consider. But we do see growth coming from either positions I can now fill because I have space and also potential space for, you know, additional acquisitions to consolidate.
Thank you. Council Lehman?
Do, did I, do I understand correctly that you're consolidating Minnetoka and Minneapolis possibly into Shakopee?
Minnetoka is Minneapolis. Our corporate headquarters today is, people refer to it as Minneapolis, but it's our Minnetoka location today, which has the 680 folks. We have an operation between 20 and 30 folks in St. Paul, and then we also contract with an external company for a warehousing operation. Definitely the warehousing operation and the Minneapolis corporate headquarters would come to Shakopee. We would consider whether we would consolidate the folks from St. Paul.
Okay, so I, what I'm driving at is do we have a ballpark of what type of number of jobs you'll need to fill? Or are they all moving?
No, if we came to Shakopee, we would actually move from our corporate offices. This would become our new corporate world headquarters. So all 680 positions would come to Shakopee. And then we would have additional jobs that would be created from the consolidation of the warehousing operations that we contract to an outside company today. And then the question then is, then our small group in St. Paul, we would then consider and work with them whether it made sense to move them or not.
And then the last question, Mayor, would be for staff to have the 110,000, is that number based on a 4.5 million?
That is the worst case. So if its value is less than 4.5, we're covered under the public hearing aspect of it.
And will we have a firmer grasp of that number by the public hearing?
I doubt that we will. Part of it will be what is assigned after the construction is completed, and that's going to be done by the county.
Because it seems like it's a pretty broad window of dollars, you know, two, five to four, five million.
We understand the, the only thing that you would be committing to us, an abatement, would be the increased value and the taxes on that, the tax capacity on that, so.
Any other questions? All right, you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, we would, I would just like to express though from the senior management team and myself, that again, we think our first choice would be to find a facility that we could retain all of our employees into one site. We believe the 1187 Park Place could be that, provided that we had the ability and wherewithal to remodel it to meet a corporate headquarters, space to accommodate all professionals in our growing business. We think we'd be a great asset to the community of Shakopee. We think we're a very good business as well for the community of Shakopee, and we'd love for your consideration for any support we can get from the city, as well as the county and the state, to try to do this project. So that I thank you and hope to see you soon again.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Samantha, do you have anything you need to add at all?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to 10A1, preliminary and final plat of Valley Park Business Center. Mr. Looney?
Mr. Lee.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. Very briefly, this is a proposed preliminary and final plat, and in your packet, you have a number of graphics. And just to give people an idea, this is, of course, the former ADC site, and the existing building is in this location. Emerson has announced their intent to purchase about 59 acres of that site, and that is Lot 1, Block 1 of Valley Park Business Center, first edition, proposed before you this evening. There are three outlots as part of this plat. Outlet A is the major one, which Opus intends to develop further, and subsequently there would be other final plats that would come forward with those developments. You have in your packet a draft resolution. By way of background, we have fast-tracked this. It was at the planning commission last Thursday. The planning commission did recommend approval of the preliminary plat to you, but there were a number of issues that were raised relatively late in the day about some of the conditions. They're wording in their location within the resolution. So between Thursday and basically yesterday, staff had prepared a revised resolution. There were some additional issues that were raised by Emerson and Opus, and we've been working through the day to address those. And so I apologize that you have a resolution that was just passed out to you. There was supposed to be one on the table, but just as well, because I made two more modifications late this afternoon, and I'd like to just walk through them. Most of the modifications related to clarification of who is responsible for which of the conditions. A number of them relate to Lot 1, Block 1, which is the Emerson project area. And so on my copy, you'll see that I have circled a number of them, E being one. And then on the second page of what was just handed out, B, D, E, G, H, and so on, I have modified so that they refer to Lot 1, Block 1, Valley Park, and Emerson's responsibility for those as requested. And that actually continues through page three because all of those conditions, A, small a through Q, related to landscaping, relate to Lot 1, Block 1. There were two final issues, I believe, that we were discussing late this afternoon. One of them related to a condition in Roman numeral one that provided for payment of seal coating charges. And we believe that that is addressed in the developer's agreement, so in the draft that we've just handed out, I've removed that condition from Roman numeral one. In addition, there has been some concern on the part of Emerson and Opus about what is meant by the need for additional right-of-way or easements. In the draft that you have in F, I've done some rewording. I don't know because I don't have a specific response whether or not that's satisfactory. Mr. Looney has suggested we have a conference call to further discuss what right-of-way or easements may be required. And so if this evening you choose to adopt Resolution 7323 as amended and handed to you this evening, I would suggest it be with the one caveat that there is further discussion that will take place about the additional right-of-way. And with that, I'll open myself to your questions, and we do have a representative from Opus here.
Council Lehman?
Mayor, couldn't the additional conversations with engineering about the additional right-of-ways, it's, it says in here, as needed as determined by city engineer, and it gives an example of what some of the things might be. I feel pretty comfortable with our engineering department being able to, to...
That language was my attempt to try to address the concern by saying there may be a need for these kinds of easements or right-of-way, and they would be determined by the city engineer. One of the hang-ups here has frankly been with the design project for the Ring Road, it had not really been far enough to identify where we might need additional right-of-ways. So that required additional refinement.
Mr. Looney?
Mayor, members of council, Council Lehman, to address, I do have a map kind of showing the areas of concern, so I think that would help everybody, because this is a fast-track. We're trying to come back to council, and the next council meeting with approval of plans in order to meet the schedule. So this is going to have to go quick. Everybody can see that? Entire map? Some of the changes we've looked at is to get increased radius for truck turning movements at all the intersections on, in, within the development. The other big concern that we have is in order to get a trail along North Ring Road in this area, never was built on, it still is a private road, and there's some drainage issues in there, and we might have to do some shifting of the road. We may need some additional right-of-way in this area. And then the other concern of right-of-way would be for a trail and the connection to Quarry Lake Park and a future Ped Bridge. So those are the things that we're looking at, to identify. Some of these things can be done by easement. Some of them we'd like to see done with the plat, by adjusting the plat line, so that's where we're at.
Council Lehman?
Bruce, but I think my point is that the any easements or right-of-way acquisition that you're looking for is pretty much based on safety.
Correct. Safety and constructability.
Right. So I don't, doesn't seem unreasonable to me.
We don't think so.
Right.
Council Wything?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Looney, can we pass this plat with the map you had suggested as potential right-of-way acquisition or right, or, Mr. Thompson, easement issues?
I think we can pass the plat, or, excuse me.
No, it's okay. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yes, the reason the condition is where the way it is, is to give staff direction to go ahead and modify it with, and work with Opus on that. If any problems come up, we'll be back before you. But you can pass the resolution as drafted. You don't need to specifically refer to that. I think that's just more for everybody's understanding. So if you adopt it this way, it'll give staff time to, authority to negotiate what they need.
Any other questions? Council Clay?
I'm assuming there are representatives from Opus here tonight to give us some sense of their comfort with the wording, recent revisions. Mr. Phelps is here tonight.
Did you want to ask him a question?
I'd like to hear his comments.
Mr. Phelps, you're on.
I'm sorry, I missed a question.
Council Clay?
I guess generally, the question is, are you relatively comfortable with these last-minute changes to the resolution?
I think we're relatively comfortable. We've been working with city staff, Mr. Thompson, all day today, and I think we're very comfortable with where we're going at this time.
If not a tad burnt out?
If not a tad burned out.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further question, entertainer motion for Resolution 7323? Council Clay?
Resolution 7323 as amended, the resolution of the city of Shakopee, Minnesota, approving the preliminary plat and final plat of Valley Park Business Center, first edition.
Do we have a second? Senator Council Lehman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. All right, now we move on to item number 10F1, award of a five-year refu- All right, now we move on to Item Number 10F1, "Award of a Five-Year Refuge Recycling Contract to Allied Waste Services, Division of Republic Services, effective June 1, 2014." Mr. McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are before you tonight with a recommendation on a process that started actually a year ago in May, at the time the contractor that you have had for the past thirteen years, Dick Sanitation, approached you with a proposal to go with single-sort recycling. However, to do that, they needed a five-year extension of the contract in order to pay for those additional recycling carts. As it had been since 2001 that we've had a contract with Dick's, your direction to us was to go out for proposals and see what else is out there to make sure that Shakopee residents would be getting the best deal. Otherwise, his contract is to expire May 31 of 2014. The city engaged two consultants, both engineering and Schaefer Consulting, to help us put together the request for proposal. That came to the Environmental Advisory Commission at several meetings last fall that went before you earlier this year, and you directed us to seek proposals. And I'll say these are proposals, not bids, so it's not totally based on lowest cost. Were solicited, and the total of six companies responded. On May 21, we went over the general findings with you. Our recommendation was that the preferred hauler to negotiate with would be Allied Waste Systems. You gave us that permission. You also directed that if that didn't work out, that we would have two fallback companies to talk to, to see if we could negotiate a contract. I'm here before you tonight. We have a recommendation for a contract with Allied. There's a number of changes, a number of things that are the same as what we have experienced over the past eleven years. I'd like to take just a moment to go through those with you now. First and foremost, will be the single-sort recycling. This is a system where, instead of the familiar eighteen-gallon blue or red bins that people have been used to in Shakopee that require you to bag or to bundle together papers and other recyclables, this is a single-wheeled cart similar in size to what you will have as garbage container. This is also something that's picked up every other week, that saves some wear and tear on the streets. It's also very popular with customers that use it. It increases the amount of materials that are to be recycled. It also has a tendency to reduce the amount of wind-blown trash that is out there as a result. This contract would provide for every other week refuse option for the ultra-low generator, thirty gallons. I've got a parent who really would never fill a thirty-gallon container. There's an option here that someone like that would be able to go to an every-other-week pickup. That will save a couple of dollars. Continuances that people will be seeing continue here, we have the same language, therefore treating delinquent account. We have snowbird provisions for folks that leave for a certain amount of time during the winter. We also have special events such as Derby Days and Cleanup Day coverage, and the contract also provides for pickups of trash from city buildings. Yard waste is another thing that will continue in a very similar manner as to what people have been used to. They can either do that with a seasonal cart, or they can do that on an as-needed bag pickup basis. There will be a provision for bulky waste pickup. If you have a refrigerator to throw, if you have a dehumidifier to throw, there will be an opportunity for people to do that on a, again, on an as-needed basis. Something new this year will be organic waste pickup, new this year under the contract. Food recycling is something that has an opportunity to be utilized. Now, I know the schools have done that, and there's, we don't have something currently available in the citywide pickup. That will be something that's still under negotiation, will probably be 2015 before that's ready to go. And the last item is something that we've had a lot of requests for from users of the parks, is recycling opportunities in the parks. This is something that will be provided again under this contract. The two major issues that people have been interested in, one is the city ownership of carts. We had two alternatives in the RFPs. We talked about this with you on May 1. We could continue the way that it has been in previous contracts, and that would be that the hauler owns the carts. The disadvantage, or, excuse me, the advantage of that to the city is that it's very simple. The contractor figures out how much it need, how much he needs to pay for the carts. That's usually amortized over the first five years of the contract. After that, it's an asset which the contractor continues to own, but the customers have paid for. The alternative that we looked at and that we ultimately got direction from you to pursue was city ownership of carts. These are things that typically have a fifteen-to-twenty-year life cycle, as I said earlier. If it's a contractor, because they only are assured of a single-five-year contract, they charge for that all up front. What the city would do in this case is that we would buy twenty-two thousand carts, half-recycling, half-garbage. We would pay for those, and then there would be a cart rental fee line item on each bill. The hauler would bill for that and would reimburse that to the city. We could do that over ten years. That would reduce the monthly fee that would be charged otherwise during what would be the first five years. And at the end of the ten-year cycle, the city council could choose to eliminate that cart rental fee. Again, it's a, it's an asset. The city would continue to own it. The advantage to you above and beyond just cost is that if after five years you're unhappy with the hauler, it makes it much easier to go out and get proposals from another hauler just based on labor. It is a rather difficult transition period going from one hauler's garbage cans and recycling containers to another. If we're just bidding for labor, it makes it much easier. The other thing that is of interest, of course, is cost and the pricing structure. Since the first contract with Dick's, there's been a differentiation between what townhomes pay and what single-family residential pay for the same amount of trash being processed. When it was first negotiated, when Dick's first came on board, there were a number of townhome associations that had their own hauler. Some of those were serviced by dumpsters that had its own set of properties in order to bring them in under the city's contract. A negotiated price differentiation was, was made. Under the Allied proposal, they've actually equalized what that is. As we note here, single-family, a sixty-gallon container currently is fifteen dollars and forty cents. For townhomes, it's nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Under the new proposal, a sixty-gallon container, regardless whether you're a single-family or townhouse, would be twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents. If you're a townhouse resident, that means that you're going to see an increase. It's going to range from seventy-one cents a month for a thirty-gallon container to three dollars and eighty-four cents for a ninety-gallon container. Conversely, if you're a single-family, it's going to go down a dollar eighty-three per month for a thirty-gallon container and two dollars, up to two dollars and eighty-six cents for a ninety-gallon container. All those figures include the sixty-nine cents per month that we estimate right now the garbage can rental fee is going to be. One of the things to offset the increase that the townhome residents are going to see is a commitment from Allied to assist the city in increasing our education for recycling, for especially townhouses. It's not a rule, but generally speaking, if it's an owner-occupied townhome, I think what I understand is that they have similar rates of recycling participation to single-family residences. A lot of the rental townhomes, however, may not be quite as good about that. If there's an opportunity to increase recycling, that's good in two ways. One, it's good for the city, because the city retains about eighty percent of the recycling revenues from the sale of the materials. And secondly, there is an opportunity for the townhouse resident to hopefully reduce in size, the size of the cart. If they're recycling more, they may be able to go from a ninety-gallon to a sixty, or a sixty to a thirty. So we'll want to continue to work on that. Just so people put this in perspective, there's about seventy-five hundred single-family customers in Shakopee, there's about thirty-five hundred townhouse customers. So it does affect a lot of people. It affects everyone. Generally speaking, contracts with garbage haulers that cities have don't change on a frequent basis. There's a reason why the contracts and relationships extend as long as they do. However, given the direction that we got from you, that you wanted to see a desire to see what else was out there, to make sure that Shakopee customers were covered and getting the best values, that's why we went to RFPs. As relayed to you at the May 21 meeting, the five-year value of the Allied proposal was about five-and-a-half million dollars. That was three-hundred-eighty thousand dollars less than the next qualified proposer. Our recommendation was based in large part on the pricing that was proposed. However, they also met the other criteria in the RFP, the experience in capacity, the references, the thoroughness and the responsiveness to the RFP, and the overall environmental benefits. Based on this, our recommendation to you is to go with a five-year contract with Allied Waste Services. I know the incumbent provider has cited excellent levels of service as a reason for continuing and not to change the contract. I can't argue with that. Over the past thirteen years, we've had an excellent relationship with Dick Sanitation. David Domack has been a pleasure to work with. I certainly give them strong references on that. However, I have nothing that I have seen in any of the reference checks that we've done that Allied would also not provide excellent levels of service. Based on that, that's a recommendation that we have to, we have a contract, we will hold Allied to the provisions of that contract, and they've given us their assurance that they will continue to provide excellent service. With that, I stand for questions.
Questions? Councilman Lehman.
Mark, the question I have probably be answered by the haulers themselves, but it seems to me over the years that the product that can be recycled has, has changed. It used to be just a steel can, the pop bottle, the washed-out milk carton, newspaper, but not the glossies. It might be a good idea to have some method of educating people on what now is able to be recycled, because I don't, I don't know what is and ain't. I know the basics, but I don't know if the glossy magazines are or not, pizza box cardboard, things like that.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Lehman, I mean, you're very correct. First, the recycling market has changed significantly, especially in plastics, the amount of things that can come in and be recycled. One of the things that were required in the RFP was to tell us about the education plan that they would have to make sure that that information got out there. And people described, you know, what they would have as far as handouts, what they would do as far as coming to schools or to, you know, street fairs or things such as that. There's a provision for that. It's certainly something that the city and the hauler will need to continue to educate people on. For one thing, maybe not everyone's heard, and secondly, things do change. You're very correct on that.
But that gives us an opportunity to downsize our trash container, which saves money, and recycle more, which eighty percent comes back to the city, again, potentially lowering your costs, because if that money then can be used to offset the price of the carts, or whatever, it lowers it one way or the other, whatever the city does with it. So...
We anticipate in the first ninety...
Just a thought.
In the first ninety days, there will be no charge to change out size of containers, because I think there will be people that find that they used to have a ninety-gallon container, and with greater amount of recycling, they might be able to get down to a sixty.
I think it, Mayor, I think it's going to be important that within that first ninety days, though, that we know what we can recycle, because if we can recycle everything possible, then we get a better handle on what size trash container that we need.
Yes.
Councilwoman Whiting.
Actually, that brought up another question, the ease of changing that size. Is that, is that going to be easily doable, thirty-day notice or something like that?
In the first ninety days, we're going to have the ability to do that, again, at no cost. We know what the current inventory is, and we'll be ordering based on what we estimate the new amounts will be. But the standard will be a sixty still. There's a majority of people that will stay with that. There will be those that will be able to downsize, but that's part of, is, as we're not going to be the owner, we're going to have to pay more attention to those sorts of things.
My original question relates to the thirty-gallon size, and you mentioned every other week. Is that option available for everybody, or is that for specific demographics?
It's, it's just for the thirty-gallon user, so it doesn't matter whether you're, if you compost, or if you do something that would take care of materials, we'll probably have an application form for that to make sure that people still get the opportunity. But it will be, we anticipate it would be for the really low-volume trash user.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right. Did Allied or anyone of both need to speak? Nope. All right, anyone in the audience want to speak this evening? Mr. Domack, I had a feeling. Please introduce yourself.
My name is David Domack. I am the Public Relations Manager and have had the pride of being the manager of the city contract for the city of Shakopee for the past twelve years. I guess what I will tell you, Mayor, members of the council, I know you probably have felt our opinion through our media, our phone calls, our, our emails, our surveys, that we have tried to provide some sort of picture of what we're all about, and that is what we started with twelve years ago. When you went through this process, you based the process on one issue, and that was service. And I know that we are emphasizing that now, and you based not your rate, your decision last time on specifically price. So I look back and I see those twelve years ago, and I look at all the things, we even have our driver here tonight, that we, we've changed, I think, that, that philosophy. Back before then, you had service issues that we, we came to fix, and against staff, Mark McNeil has, you know, mentioned that we have fixed those things, and we take pride in doing that. That being said, we feel strongly that that's worth, if that is the number, the sixty-three cents a home a month, we strongly feel that's worth, worth what we're all about. So want to take this opportunity to thank you for your time and for the years that we've been able to service you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, any further discussion or questions? Councilor Whiting.
I'll make a motion to award the refuse and recycling contract to Allied Waste Services, a division of, Division of Republic Services, for a five-year period from June 1, 2014 through May 31, 2019.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Speaker of Council Lehman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. Now, we're going to move on to Item Number 10F2, "Discussion of Fiscal Year 2014 City Operating Budget Preparation." Ms. Linehan.
Look how excited she gets.
I am. Nothing, nothing says fun like city budgets. We are about to break into the 2014 budget preparation. We have had several discussions on how to do this process more effectively. As you've heard tonight, we have new staff, we have changing staff roles, we have a lot of things that are changing within the city. One of the areas we've discussed is, is there a more effective and useful way to provide the council with budget information, to provide really workable information to the public as we go through this process? And we'd just like to walk through a few ideas with the city council this evening and get your input as to the items we've been considering. The recent legislative session brought some really interesting changes to the budget presentation process. First and foremost is the property tax levy limits are back on. Those of you who've been involved in government for several years knows this is like the catapult that just keeps going back and forth. You have levy limits, sometimes you don't have levy limits. They're back on. Levy limits are three percent. That will put some interesting discussion into our budgets. But the one factor to consider when we talk levy limits is the debt... But the one factor to consider when we talk levy limits is the debt service levies are above this levy limit. Wasika, excuse me, I'm having a timeframe lapse here. Shakopee has not put debt service levies as specific line items in their levies for all of your outstanding debt. This may be a year to consider this. We'll be talking about this more as time moves on. The legislature also brought about a really radical change in removing sales tax from purchases of cities. That was enacted twenty years ago. For twenty years, cities have been paying sales tax on items that for many, many years, and to the angst of many vendors, we paid sales tax, they had to change their systems. We are now going to start, as of January one, twenty fourteen, telling them all, never mind, now we don't pay sales tax. So there is going to be some real changes to city budgets in several areas. One of the areas I outlined in the memo was public works. Just take your salt and sand, for example. In one year, the amount we will not be putting out to the state of Minnesota is, is going to be substantial. But it's not the kind of dollars, this is, this is where the interesting part is. Cities have not typically kept a line item specific to sales tax when we pay vendors. This is not going to be something I can just pull up a computer line item object code and tell you this is what you paid in sales tax. It also doesn't impact every item that we purchase, and we're still waiting to get some of the more specific details from the Department of Revenue. So that will be coming forward in July and August. Another interesting component of this year's budget will be the entire process that you've witnessed again tonight, and that is the expansion that you're seeing in Shakopee on capital projects, on capital construction, on economic development. This is where staff, administrative, and department heads really want to put their focus on this year's budget. A part of that process will mean we are not going to be mired in details. We're looking at a proposal to bring forward budgets that are more administratively presented. That's unique here. I know each year you've had each department come in and through multiple meetings, have very detailed presentations from every department. It's not done that way in a lot of cities. It is handled more administratively. Your presentation provides the city council with the information in detail format, but it isn't reviewed line item by line item. Staff is presenting an option tonight that we would like to bring forward an administrative-based budget. You will be provided the details, the city administrator will provide you the budget, provide the presentations, give you the overviews of all the specific ins and outs of the department. But we would be hoping to eliminate a number of those budget meetings so that staff can focus on these really critical items we're facing for 2014. Capital outlay, capital construction, future needs for CIP planning, economic development, abatement, increment. And what staff is looking at tonight is direction in a couple of areas. We have a three percent levy limit. In preparation of the 2014 preliminary budget, we would like some direction from council as to where do they see this budget moving forward from a levy presentation. As you have in previous years, you have a levy limit, excuse me, excuse me, a levy preliminary amount that is presented to the county by September fifteenth. That amount cannot be increased, but it can be decreased before you finalize your budget in December. So as we prepare this early budget, we're looking and saying, if you have very specific thoughts and directions that you would like staff to think of and consider, we'd like to know what those are relating to the levy. We're also looking at the presentation of the budget as a, as a whole. What is the council's wishes on that process? And are there other factors as we move forward that you also want council and the administrative staff to consider? And to that, I would open it up to discussion.
Well, that's an easy one.
Okay.
Just kidding. Let's start with the administrative budget portion of it. That it would be a budget that is more staff-directed and approved by council than council going through all, each individual line item? Is this something that we're willing to look at? What, we can still obviously ask any question that we want to, but it would more come to us as a formed budget that we would tweak? Is that a good way to...
Well, and we also will provide the council with each budget, each division, each business unit, each change and update in that. But to have a reduction in the amount of these meetings that we have, where one night you sit and go through, you know, all of the recreation, next night you sit and you go through all of transit and planning. But we just do it in a more condensed and concise manner as presented by the administrator, who, with the finance and administrative teams, will be meeting departmentally to go through each and every one of these items.
Councilman Whiting?
I see this as a more of a policy governance kind of thing through the city administrator, and I don't see it as an issue as long as in the end, we discuss it. We can have the discussions at, at the staff level when we have questions on what's presented to us and do that outside of a meeting format, and I think we can still get the same results and good results on that.
That's Clay.
If we did that, the line-by-line-by-line jot and tittle paperwork that has been presented to us in the past would still be available for Matt to come in on a weekday other than a council meeting night and sit down and go over line by line by line.
I'll send it out to you as we, as we prep it. That's the other piece we're working on. We're making some pretty material changes in the upstairs on how we actually do our budget preparation with a lot less paper and a whole lot more computer technology.
I've always thought it a bit frustrating that when you take all of our council work packets and pile them up, they wind up being five inches higher than the budget itself.
Yeah. It, it is. It's, it's a very complex process to go through and make, you know, ten, twelve budget work session packets. And last year, I believe, we ended up with six different work sessions. And that notebook, I ended up with two full workbooks, so I understand what you're saying. And that's what prompted this discussion as we started talking and saying, it's been done this way for many, many years, but we're all looking at doing things differently. We're all changing a lot of our workflows right now. And we're transitioning into people doing a lot of different tasks that they've not considered before and thought, this might be a really good opportunity to bring this type of change and see how the council would respond.
Senator Lehman?
I'm not opposed to change, however, when we first made this change from what we previously used, we all sat here and I said, this is fine, I don't get it.
Okay.
And the rest of us said, we don't get it either. So I think the important part is that we actually understand what is being in front of us. Now, for me, I'm not really going line by line at little, little pens and paperclips. I like to compare last year to this year on the big things. And I, it's not about an individual, it's, it's total payroll and benefits last year to this year by department, energy costs, these types of things.
And I like that idea.
Um, what's that?
I like that idea.
And I do like to do that, and especially the bigger ticket things and the bigger projects, so...
So council, if I put in a 2011 actual, 2012 actual, 2013 year-to-date, 2014 proposed?
Well, for 2014, I don't need 2011. I would, I would use 2012 actual and 2013 actual.
Okay.
Proposed maybe.
To date, 2013.
And, and the reason we typically put two-years actual in some of these is that dependent on, especially in personnel, there has been some pretty substantial adjustments business unit-wise, so... Okay. We, we will gladly do that.
Yep, that, that works for me.
I'd like to see the 2013 budget and 2013 actual, and then proposed 2014.
Okay.
In case something got askew for some other reason.
Senator McNeil?
Well, there are opportunities that we've used in the past during budget to talk about bigger policy issues. And obviously, when you set the budget, you're setting your policies and priorities for the upcoming year. I'm thinking, however, we have had traditionally, at the first meeting, we've invited Louisville and Jackson Township in to talk. In most cases, that hasn't really focused on what the actual amount of levy is going to be, that we get into other issues. And so this might be an opportunity this year, maybe to reschedule that and perhaps do that sometime other than when we're actually talking about budget. But look at some of the bigger things that we're still in the talking phase on. For example, one sixty-nine, sixty-nine, there's mining proposal that's going in Louisville Township. And provide that evening with the opportunity to really do some information sharing and talk about things other than just, okay, what's the formula for fire billing and that sort of thing? I know that's still important to them, but...
Senator Lehman?
If there's going to be a, a economic impact change to their budgets from our actions, I think we ought to have that discussion with them.
Sure, I understand that, and we certainly would provide them with that information upfront. However, remember, they're in a different budget cycle than, than we are.
Right.
So it's not quite the same time-critical sort of thing they'd be able to do that. And quite frankly, we've not really done things in recent years that have caused a substantive increase. We've got a contract for fire sharing, fire services that really hasn't changed since the early nineteen nineties, so...
Councilman Clay?
I was wondering at what point in time and calendar-wise would, are you suggesting we do sit down with them?
We could do it later in the year. I'm thinking October, November. Their annual year starts, I believe, March first.
Mm-hmm, correct.
It would be after we set the preliminary budget.
I can tell you historically, the meetings and the dollars and the cash flow with the fire issues have never impacted your levy.
Well, no, but it affects theirs, their spending.
But they've already got that set by the time we meet. And that's been one of the more bizarre parts of this whole schedule is we've met, but they're done.
We just did the park and the fire last year, so I mean, we're not anticipating any changes from that unless they change their quantity of service request.
Correct, and we've received no notification, have we, Mr. McNeil? No.
No.
Isn't there a fire issue still outstanding, though, with the townships?
I think there's still a billing, a formula issue that's not this unique to our two townships. I think there's still a discussion going on even at the scale level as far as is there a formula that could be applicable to all? Right now, that's, that's not happening.
No.
Okay. All right, did you get direction on that piece?
So if I'm, if I'm hearing council right, the administrative budget, we will be changing formats. Like I said, as a, as a management group, we've been looking at the best way to utilize time. A lot of us have gone through personnel transitions. This is a perfect year for us to give some of these changes a try.
Chris, you have any input on that? Okay.
Do you want to talk about health costs?
Oh, yeah, good news. Put the good news out there.
As far as personnel changes go, we have several full-time positions that were added to this year's budget on a partial-year basis, so we will have to accommodate a full year of wage and benefits for those individuals. We have an increase in our employer contribution to the pension for our police officers and firefighters that is state mandated coming January one, so we will need to accommodate that. The other big thing we thought was coming in the budget personnel-wise for next year was the federal healthcare reform mandates. But I read as of about four o'clock this afternoon, the Obama administration has put off implementation of that. So that would have forced us to face the benefit eligibility of a small handful of our part-time employees in parks and rec. We can certainly still talk about that if the council so desires, but we are not under a mandate from the federal government to make changes in who we have as benefits eligible and who we don't have as benefits eligible.
Until January one, twenty fifteen now.
Correct.
Correct.
Councilman Lehman?
Do we have a ballpark, or at some point, I guess, will we have a ballpark of the savings of the sales tax?
Correct. That's one of the pieces that we're working on as we speak because, again, what's confusing on this issue is when you're dealing with items that were purchased specifically for public safety, they've never been sales taxed. So then to differentiate those and make sure you've got those pieces, I'm waiting. There's some real specific areas of professional services and such that at one time were considered, we don't think they are, but we're still waiting to get some more definitions. So I definitely want to come up with a more precise number than what we have now.
That'd be good to know at some point.
Yeah, absolutely.
And on a positive note, as we also put in this, because I'm just full of positive ideas tonight, you're going to see for the first time in several years, an increase in market value. And that is before you even think of bringing in the expansions and the, and the programs for the commercial industrial sites. There is actually a move from that downward trend in your market value from two thousand nine to now, and it's starting to climb up.
So how does that work? Are we able to capture any of that? With anything of that that we would want be able to capture would still count toward the levy limit?
Correct.
Levy increase, correct?
Right, and, and again, one of the things that it's difficult, and I think it's hard for people to hear, but when you are experiencing that good growth, that is an effective time to consider an increase in a levy, because it will not have that significant impact that you would if you're doing a tax levy at the same time your market values are declining.
Right.
Okay. Are there any other thoughts and considerations council would wish to have?
You were asking, I thought. Well, we thought about the, the levy itself.
Correct.
Regardless of the levy limit.
And I don't know if as a council you've had much time to think about that. I wanted to get the idea out early. Some people have very strong feelings, some people, you know...
Well, my general feelings is that we recognized in, for this current 2013 budget, we recognized a number of issues that we needed to spend some money on or start spending money on. But the majority of the increase in the levy for this current budget was in order to start building up funds for the reconstruction overlay road stuff, the bubble that's, we know is, is coming. And I assume that's something we're going to need to look at again this year and probably the next year after that, and the next year after.
I, I would be remiss if I said you have no less than five years of commitment to an increasing capital improvement fund transfer.
So that funding was represented in the current budget?
Correct. You had a one first-year transfer.
So to continue what we were doing in that respect going forward is not going to result in an increase in the levy?
It will result in an increase in the levy because you put your first transfer in in 2013 at five hundred thousand. In order to keep this movement going, 2014 is seven fifty, 2015 is a million. We're staggering up because as we have talked, and this is our meeting on Friday, we'll have a CIP meeting.
We have that aspect to consider.
Yes.
But...
Full-time positions.
We have a couple of full-time positions that were just part, part of the year funded for this year that are going to be full, fully loaded for 2014.
Correct, to the tune of about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Then we have a sales tax credit.
Then we have a sales tax credit.
You have a sales tax credit.
And we've got a little bit of a bump in market values.
Bump in market value.
Which doesn't, which isn't going to mean we're going to collect more money, but it means that we can keep the tax rate for everybody the same and still have a little bit more money coming in.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I, I would like to see as good by as, with as little increase this year as possible. I, I think, you know, we, we saw some stuff that needed to be done and, and, you know, hit the bullet, but...
It, that bubble is not getting smaller.
True. So I know we still have to worry about that, but I mean, I'm not, I guess I'm not thinking that, I'm not crazy about the idea of, you know, doing any more significant increases in, in staff or things like that for this coming budget, I think. Just the things that absolutely have to be done and then kind of go from there.
I think one thing we, we've talked about already is if you're looking at capital projects, if you're looking at capital construction, if you're looking at this kind of capital-based work that's been delayed, deferred, and now you really have to get to it, I think it would be remiss if we didn't say there may need to be a staffing consideration in there at some point, too. So that'll be part of our discussion. So that'll be part of our discussion.
Councilwoman.
I'd go with Councilor Clay on the infrastructure and streets and the capital improvement. But I also want to make sure we're not forgetting about that debt service and making sure that we're funding at least more of that than we have in the past. And that's something that the voters voted for, and we've always dismissed it. Also, I wouldn't mind seeing a little, in some economic development projects with the 69, 169, if we need to fund a little bit there. And then I think we did correct a lot of the staffing issues, but maybe, maybe there's something we're unaware of or on the horizon, so. Those are my thoughts and one I think we need to consider.
I'm going to let Mr. Looney get in here first. Mr. Looney.
Well, since everybody's talking about capital and staffing, I thought I'd weigh in that next year already in our CIP program, we're looking at a bigger year than this year. And the staffing level that we have in engineering just isn't adequate to handle it. And so we need to look at that. And so I'll be proposing some things. Also, we have not hired anybody else, any full-time employees in public work since 2007. Now, we haven't increased a lot of streets and parks and that, but we are starting to do that. And we're starting to do more, plus taking on more duties. I think we're going to have to look at that. Again, it gets down to level of service, but we can do things in a certain way to minimize the increase to the tax levy, utilize our utility funds better. And when the increase in engineering staff uses it as associated with revenue because otherwise if we don't have that staff, we have to hire consultants. So the money's going out one way or the other.
Correct.
So I just want to bring that to your attention. I will be proposing that. And we'll have to see where the chips fall.
Okay. Councilwoman.
Do we know if there's any changes to the market value exclusion thing?
No.
No.
Okay.
That is, again, another positive. No.
And do we know if we're included in the local aids?
We have no local government aid coming into the city.
Right. But when we hear from the state how they're increasing it by a trillion dollars, you would think we'd get something, but we're getting nothing.
Nada.
Okay. So that only applies to those that are currently getting something.
Actually, there are a couple of cities. I know Vatnus Heights went from getting zero to something. So there are a few, but not, not many.
So we need to ask, how come we're not getting it?
There's a.
It's the Page-Lung formula.
Oh, one of them things.
Oh, yeah. And there's two people in the state who understand it.
Okay.
I'm not one of them.
I guess, you know, I somewhat agree with Councilor Clay, but I have to admit that I don't have enough pieces of this puzzle to have a position at this point.
And that's our goal. As soon as the Fourth of July period is over, we're going to hit the ground running on this, starting with the CIP, getting into the economic development, rolling through and upgrading all the personnel costs, tackling the sales tax, and providing you, we hope, with that bigger picture, overall review. Is there any other suggestions or thoughts that council would wish to pass on? Otherwise, we'll move forward with what we're hearing. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Julie. Item number 11, council member reports. We'll start with Councilwoman.
I attended Derby Days' meeting. Little discussion on putting all their permits and licenses and all that stuff in order. Apparently, there's a meeting today, I guess, they had with the city police department.
No, it's actually tomorrow at 6:00 P.M.
So they'll be finalizing all that. I think it's coming before the city council, a second meeting in July, which hopefully there's, everything's in orders because I don't think they have a table to the next meeting opportunity.
Actually, you could because you set July 29th for.
Okay. Okay. That's a little bit better, but hopefully they got everything in order. It's coming along. They do need, they're still looking for volunteers, for chairing committees and volunteering committees and donations and just volunteers in general. They can contact them at shakopeederbydays.com. Pretty interactive website. They've updated it, so that's what I have.
Very good. Councilwoman.
Two spoke meetings ago, I had to work at my real job. This last Monday, they didn't have a meeting. I guess there wasn't enough stuff to do, so they didn't have a meeting without me.
That's sweet.
So I have nothing to report.
All right. Councilwoman.
Wednesday, June 19th, the chamber held their board meeting and the results of their member survey were very positive with a strong return rate. Eighty-three percent value their investment of membership. Much of the results pointed to retaining the local focus of their activities as it should. Some group has been formed that is focusing on downtown issues and discussion was held on the direction of strategic planning for that group. Thursday, June 20th, I met with residents of Levy Drive Apartments and discussed transit issues they may be having with the corridor, circulator buses. I contacted Scott County Transit and have set up a meeting with them and the residents for July 9th at 7:00 P.M. at the Levy Drive facility there to address some of those concerns. And then June 25th, we participated in the Scale 501, which I thought was a valuable discussion and found it productive.
Very good.
We're guys were all there.
I should have reported that.
Yeah. We're going to let it go.
Yeah, exactly. We let it go. On June 20, 21st, I attended the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference. It was in St. Paul. It was the hundred-year league anniversary. And went to a variety of different workshops and got to talk to a lot of people, so it was a very good conference. But probably the biggest thing, the last couple of weeks, on the 28th, I went to with a couple of folks from the county morning last Friday, Met Council, had a workshop on the future transit corridors. They are in the last stages of their study on what mass transit would look like on the major corridors. So there's 169 is a corridor they're studying, 212, 394, 35E, 55. So there are a bunch of different major corridors throughout the metro. And so they're studying where future transit stations should be placed and where it makes the most sense with population and employment. And they have a, their current plans have a bus rapid transit line from downtown out 394 to 169 and then down 169 with the terminus at Marshall Road. And in Shakopee, they currently have a stop at Stagecoach for South Bridge, using the South Bridge Transit Station parking ride that's currently there, as well as one at Marshall Road. They don't currently have one at Canterbury Road. And so folks from the county and myself are advocating fairly hard on, we need to make sure to plan for a stop and don't know exactly what that would look like, but at least a stop at Canterbury Road to access the entertainment venues, but also the massive job employment center that's right there. So it was a very good discussion. It seemed to go really well with the workshops. We broke out in a lot of small groups and talked directly to the decision-makers, so that was good. We'll see if they listen or not. I have no idea, but it was a very good conversation.
You did a big parking area out there, weren't you, on 83?
Not necessarily. It's mostly, what it would mostly be is a stop to bring people to there from other places. It wouldn't be like a parking ride where everybody would go to Marshall Road Transit Station and get on a bus and go to downtown. It would be a lot of people coming from the 169 corridor or so from up at 394 and 169, getting on somewhere through there or walking to a stop and then being able to get to their job at, in Shakopee.
I could see them coming down and getting off to work
Mm-hmm.
and then getting on and going back. But if they're going to get on the bus there to go somewhere else to work, they're going to have to leave a car there or get a ride there
Yeah.
because there's not much residential in the area.
Exactly. You're absolutely right. I mean, they, residents would mostly be using Marshall Road and 21 Eagle Creek and other, and South Bridge to get on the bus. And that would also allow people from Minneapolis to have a way to get to Canterbury Park and Valley Fair. And there would need to be additions to the local circulators and things like that that would need to happen with it, but we're years off and need to figure that out as the plans further. They are also having, they're doing a more in-depth study. Met Council is leading it of the 169 corridor that will start this fall. That will be a much more detailed study about exactly what, especially what our economic development is doing in Shakopee to impact transit and where stations along 169 really do need to be in order to pick up all those folks. So it was very good, and they're putting a lot of things together for it. So those are my reports there. Item number 12, any other business for the evening? All right. 13, adjourn to Tuesday, July 16th at 7:00 P.M. Councilwoman.
Adjourned Tuesday, July 16th, 7:00 P.M.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Whiting, any discussion?
I will be here.
Thank you for the warning on that one. I appreciate it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:37.
That's the league summary.
Called you a slacker. I said, no. Don't say it. The king is a slacker.
I said he's a strong backer.